You had the brochure you could go through and read through on your own as well. It's not just the documentation. Sometimes the wording inside of a document may not be in layman's terms, but when it's given to you on a brochure, it's written in a way that should be understood by every citizen. Then they have the opportunity to come in and to respond to what has been given to them. That was not done by many. It's we sat and waited more than one time and people were not arriving nor were they responding. So at this point, when we've already gone through these processes, it can sometimes seem like you're getting a little bit after the matter. And we want to make sure that you get a chance to go before the matter. I don't know if the attorney wants to speak to this or not. Did you have any comment that you want to share?
I was just going to mention that even when the public notice was in the newspaper about this ordinance being considered by the commission, if anyone had chosen to get a copy of that, they could have contacted the city clerk and gotten a copy. So it's been available for a couple of months now.
Yes. So it's not that this information has been hidden from anyone. It's actually been revealed multiple times. And sometimes it appears that our, this is just what I'm noticing, that many of us, after the fact, hear something and it can be misinformation. We are told something that's not true. Yes, you are hearing the abbreviated version when you come into a commission meeting like this. But the reality is it has been spoken out, it's been clear. We had a gentleman sitting at a table ready to respond to every question. We had different ones sitting there waiting on the citizens to come. No one appeared. And we had commissioners sitting there waiting on their districts to come in and be represented to speak. No one showed up. So what we're hearing now is that, oh, we're ignoring the citizens or we're putting something out on them without them knowing, when in reality, we've multiple times, we've given them opportunity from newspapers, brochures, town halls. We've had conversations with individuals. And even now, as you're speaking to us, we're getting more information. Being said, and those who have those brochures can go back and review and recite and rehearse those same things that we've already seen before. And I appreciate your comment. You have one more comment you said.
What you just said was spot on. Nobody showed up. Does that not, does that not cut a light on somewhere? Nobody showed up.
It usually doesn't happen until the bill comes. Then everybody feels the, we look for the energy then. Everybody's going to start showing up after the conversation because at that time, it seems as if it's not important. The city's sending us something, we just follow the way, we don't read it. Then when it comes on our bill, now we are activated and aggravated.
But the thing is, just like myself, my wife pays my bill. I don't see it. I don't see that that comes through, you know? And the thing in the paper, I didn't see that either. And I am a fervent reader of the Journal Herald. Our once a week deal with three pages of who died that you wished you would have known about, you know? Because that's where we stand. But I will, my last comment about this. Because as you say, done deal. But I will say this, and I will say this to Commissioner Gaines.
Solomon Gaines.
Solomon Gaines. You was just marrying one, we knew each other. All the times I've stood behind this podium and looked at y'all. First interaction ever, ever, when I've had a question. Yeah, I've been directed to the city attorney and we've not been able to get together on other business we've had up here because of time restraints and whatever. Regardless of the Monday meeting, when a person comes and stands behind this podium in this town, it would be nice to get an answer. Good, bad, or in between. Because I can take any of it. I don't care. I don't care. I hear every word you've said about the meetings. I've been tied up because y'all know I've been here. But my wife had a stroke. I've been tied up, wasn't able to be here. She's doing better, so guess who's back? And I'm not here just to complain about everything goes on in this city. I'm here for anything that goes on in this city. I don't care what it is, you know? It doesn't matter. Because there's a lot of negatives. And the only way that we gonna get past the negatives is to put the positives out there, you know? And the interaction we had tonight, in my mind and my heart, was a positive. And I thank you, Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Yes, and I appreciate you, Mayor. Because I've stood here several times and now I got an answer. Regardless if it's a Monday meeting or Tuesday meeting, I think you should get the courtesy of at least some type of answer whenever you come up here to speak. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. Madam City Clerk.
Consent calendar, approval of Ms. Ordinance Second Readnance. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to amend 105 Environmental Control by adding a new article for stormwater utility sections 105-55 through 105-67, inclusive to provide for codification, to provide for renumbering or relettering, or to provide for separability to repel conflict and ordinances to provide an effective date and for other purposes. There are no privileged license renewals or privileged license. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to receive the consent calendar?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines, a second from our Commissioner Davis. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries, consent calendar passes. At this time, we will hear from our Ms. Linda Jones.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioner, City Manager. Our first item tonight is a request to purchase two pumps, flat pumps from Xylem Water Solutions at a Garden City, Georgia, for a total purchase price of thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents. These are to replace the pumps at Champion Lift Station and J Street Lift Station, which cannot be repaired anymore. And as you know, we currently have flat pumps in place, so these will just be removed and these new ones put in. And this is a request from ESG Operations.
Very good. Thank you, Ms. Linda. Is there a motion to receive this bid? We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second the motion.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Davis, a second from our Commissioner Hopkins. Is there any discussion on this? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign? Motion carries. Bid approved. Ms. Linda?
Our second item tonight is a request from our Fire Department to upgrade their software. They have been using Firehouse software since 1999 and their original company has now been purchased by ESO and they are requiring all Firehouse users to upgrade to the Fire RMS bundle. This will keep all of our history that we have with Firehouse since 1999 in place and all that will transfer over. And that's an annual purchase price of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cent. But this will be prorated for this year because we're already into our budget year. So it'd be a little less than that for this year, but it will not exceed that amount, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Jones. Is there a motion to receive this bid?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Is there any discussion on this Firehouse software upgrade?
Mr. Mayor?
Commissioner Hopkins.
I know the answer is yes, but I want to clarify that. It's in your budget, right, Chief?
This is funding out of the.
They are a few funds, okay, okay, that's what I wanted to know, thank you.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. This bid approved. Ms. Jones?
Our next item is surplus property, W A Y X twenty-two dash O two. You have an attached list of items that are no longer needed in any city department and we're requesting that you declare those surplus so that those can be sold on GoDeals.com, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Is there a motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines, seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Is there any discussion regarding this surplus property? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. This bid is approved. Ms. Linda?
This next item is bid number F Y twenty-two dash O three. This is for cleaning and diving services to clean two in-ground potable water tanks located at our water plant at 512 Alice Street. They also need to have epoxy applied to the internal pipes on those. We've received four bids on this project and after staff and ESG review, it's our recommendation to award the bid to Underwater Solutions Incorporated for a total of nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars. Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Is there a motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Hopkins, a second from our Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this cleaning diving tank cleaning?
Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask, I've got to ask last night, Tanya, how often do we normally have to do this?
Um, we are supposed to do it like every five years perhaps? We haven't done it in years and years, though.
That's crazy.
Yes.
So that's the reason the epoxy inside the tanks need to be updated.
Right.
Thank you, that's all the questions I had.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Bid approved. Ms. Linda?
Our last item tonight is surplus real property, W A Y X twenty-two dash O three. We have three parcels of city-owned properties that we are requesting to be declared a surplus property. That's Francis Street, it's one point zero four of an acre. Grove Avenue, fifteen oh seven Grove Avenue, one point twenty-three acres. And then the next portion on Grove Avenue at point eighty of an acre. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Ms. Linda. Is there a motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Hopkins, seconded by our Commissioner Davis. Any discussion on this surplus property? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. This bid is approved. Thank you, Ms. Linda. At this time, Madam Clerk?
Ordinances. An ordinance to amend the code of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to amend Chapter Six, alcoholic beverages, alcohol Article One and general by amending Section Six dash Seven, consumption upon public ways, public street or highway, public property or public places to provide for codification, to provide for renumbering or relettering, to provide for separability, to repel conflict and ordinances, to provide for effective date and for other purposes. By adopting this ordinance, the city commission will amend the code of ordinance to allow upon containers of alcohol beverages in a designated area of downtown Wake Cross. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion for this ordinance?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
A motion, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It's been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and seconded by our Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this ordinance?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Commissioner Solomon Gaines.
Mr. Attorney, this is one we kind of spent a little bit of time on last night. Can you explain the difference between the alcohol and beer versus the liquor?
Yes.
Thank you.
As you all know, that originally the city commission approved open containers to be used or carried around downtown in the triangle of downtown Wake Cross during Swamp Fest and other city or development authority events. They gave me the task from the city commission to allow it year round. But there, since that time, there's been a little change in state law as it applies to mixed drinks. So as they have done in Savannah, Brunswick and other places, the city is now going to allow, if this ordinance is passed, to allow a person to get a mixture, or beer or a wine in a plastic or cup, plastic or paper cup with designated sticker to showing who sold it to them. And then they can walk around in that designated triangle of downtown Wake Cross. However, during the COVID times, the state legislature in May of this year, I believe it was in May of this year, passed a law as it relates to mixed drinks. A mixed drinks has a little, so you can't as easily get one. You have to actually have purchased a meal from the restaurant that sells that drink and then you can get one and walk out with that. So it's a little different with mixed drinks versus beer and wine. But that's because of the state law.
Thank you.
Any further questions or comments?
I have one question. So will the PD monitor that still or how does, how do we monitor that?
So it would be through our normal course of action when we get complaints, citizen complaints. But there is a, usually a police officer that's assigned to that beat. And it's a very, an area that we frequent a lot. And so, you know, as we get the complaints, we investigate it. But if there's events, then of course we maintain a more heavier, you know, presence down there, so.
And it's just going to be in the downtown area?
And I also say this because of the businesses and everything down there. It is one of the higher priorities, particularly once the sun sets, to the officers actually check all our businesses while they're closed and ride by them while they're open and have a closer look on things. But like I said, it's complaint-driven, but we do maintain a high presence down in that area.
And both.
The area would be the triangle formed by Plant Avenue, Isabella and Tebow, that triangle. But it also includes the train viewing platform that is at the rail depot.
Any further clarity needed? If not, are you ready to move into voting?
Ready.
Let's move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Ordinance approved. At this time, Madam Clerk?
Resolution. A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to adopt groundwater monitoring and statistical analysis report at the closed Blackwell Street landfill, second event of 2021, completed by T T L of Valdosta, Georgia and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will accept the monitoring and statistical analysis report for 2021 prepared by T T L of Valdosta, Georgia and will authorize by a copy being executed and forwarded to the Georgia Environmental Protection Division. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion on this resolution?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is a motion to approve, is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines, a second by our Commissioner Strickland. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Tanya, can you explain a little bit about this resolution, please?
Sure. So we invited Mr. Keith Reeves here yesterday from T T L to explain the chemical report that was presented. But what happens is our landfill was closed on Blackwell Street. It was closed about thirty years ago. There are groundwater monitoring stations there and each of those stations have data to report. And then we submit that to E P D and the mayor signs off on it. So this is giving the mayor the approval to sign off on that report. But as was noted in some of the reports, I recall particularly Barium had a little bit higher concentrate at one of the groundwater monitor stations. And the question was asked, is that because of all the rain that we've gotten? And that was probable, that, I believe that's what he said, that some of those had higher concentrations because of all the rain that has been moving. Is that sufficient?
That is good.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor, I just want to try to explain that because from time to time, I am asked still about that landfill because it's out near the Humane Society. So it is still being monitored and it's still being tested and we are in compliance.
Yes, ma'am.
That's all, Mr. Mayor.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. This resolution is approved. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia recognizing Georgia City's Week, October 3rd, 2021 through October 9th, 2021, and encouraging all citizens and residents to support the celebration and corresponding activities and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will recognize the week of October 3rd through 9th, 2021 as Georgia City's Week, encouraging all employees, citizens and governmental officials to do everything possible to ensure that the week is recognized and celebrated accordingly. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Is there a motion to?
Move for approval.
Second, Mr. Mayor.
We have a motion from Commissioner Davis, a second by Commissioners Hopkins and Solomon Gaines. Is there any discussion on this resolution?
Could the new HR director, she has activities for that week. Could she please come and explain that so that the citizens are well informed of what's going on at City Hall if they watch this meeting?
So October 4th, we will have our art contest. The children from the elementary schools were encouraged to do some of their favorite drawings of the places around town, something that they love about their town, and submit it. We will pick winners from that. October 5th, we are doing a Facebook selfie contest. A selfie of your favorite place in town, something that you love about it. And we're going to give a gift card or gift certificate to the winner of that one. October 6th, the Fire Department will honor those citizens who are a hundred years or older with a video depicting their bio and pictures. October 7th, the Police Department will make a video of our parks giving the history and background of each one of them. And then October 8th, we will have an employee luncheon and then we will host movie in the park with the movie Onward playing. October 8th, when the sun goes down.
On a Friday night?
Yes.
And it'll begin at dusk.
Which park?
It's at Plant Park.
Plant Park.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you very much. Those are our activities for the week of City, National City Week. Thank you.
Thank our HR director. At this time, is there any other question? If there is no other question, at this time, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. Resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to approve payment to Xylem Water Solutions for emergency work on Champion and J Street Lift Stations and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve the emergency procedures used by the city manager or her designee for the repair of the pumps at the Champion and J Street Lift Station in an amount of thirteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-seven dollars and seventy-five cents payable to Xylem Water Solutions of Garden City, Georgia. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I entertain a motion.
Move for approval.
Is there a second?
Second, Mr. Mayor.
It has been motioned by our Commissioner Davis and seconded by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay? Motion carries. This resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to formally appoint certain designated and qualified members to the city's Board of Ethics and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will formally approve nine designated and qualified members of the city's Board of Ethics. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We entertain a motion? Hearing no motion? This resolution dies. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to approve continued use of E S O Fire R M S software for Wake Cross Fire Department and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the city commission will approve the continued use of E S O Fire R M S bundle software for the Fire Department's computer record-keeping needs and also approve the payment of an invoice to E S O in the amount of sixteen thousand, nine hundred and forty-six dollars and seventy-five cents to be paid from American Rescue Plan Act of 2021 funds. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. At this time, we entertain a motion on this resolution.
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Is there a second?
Second the motion.
It has been motioned by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines, seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Chief, could you tell the public how great this is going to be for the Fire Department and some things that it will improve on, please? That was very educational for me last night.
Mayor and Commissioners, I don't know if I can remember. Ma'am? I see you said I don't remember if I can remember word for word, so I'll give a short version. As Linda said, we had this program since 1999. And I also often like to refer to it as we had the old rotary-type telephone and whatever upgrades they could do with that system. This new program is night and day. It's like the most elaborate cell phone that's out on the market today. Are being able to track specific type of calls in each individual district. Once we learned this, now I might be able to do it coming out the gate. But once we learned this, if a commissioner asked what type of incidents do we have, just say, hey, are we having juvenile fire setting problems? We can put that information in, we can query, we can map that out. Once we get the mapping and all set up into the system, we can show you maybe hot pockets, and we'll use this, that if we see trends happening in a certain area, then we can concentrate our efforts toward fire safety or whatever the case may be. It may be something we have to work in conjunction with the Police Department to do better watches if we have a string of fires in a certain area that may be, you know, several blocks out versus right on top of each other. So the opportunity is going to give us to track and see real time what's happening in our community is tremendous. We're able to, going to be able to track equipment, something we've not been able to do. We've been doing it on paper and, you know, paper can get lost or you forget about it. It'll immediately send an email to the battalion chief that's over our tools and equipment on what's happening day to day with that. So he can keep up, track it, get the replacement made, the repair made. He can go back and question later, say, where are we at with this? So it'll be a live update daily on what even tools and equipment. Versus I get something three months down the road, hey, we've had this piece of equipment broker out of service and not know anything about it. So that's going to speed up replacement of needed valuable needed equipment too. So I'm looking forward to it. It is a night and day. They give us an hour video of what it was. One of the things too, I'm not sure that I mentioned last night was part of what we're buying is on-demand training. So as we have people coming up to be officers, they can go on this at any time and pull training out. If we have someone doing a call that we're not familiar with, we may have had a hazmat scene that we haven't had one in two or three years. They can go pull that program down without having to wait for us to come in the following day or over the weekend for us to come in Monday and then get training on how to fill that particular piece out. We've never had that before. We've always had to rely on that information to be passed down. And for a long time, of course, Priscilla retired and now Lisa's taken her place. Those have been the key folks that have passed that information on or been able to answer the questions. So it doesn't take them out of learning that and being responsible for that information, but it does give us another avenue to go and get that training. That's a tremendous piece of equipment that I like that's offered with this. So I'm appreciative that you approved that. Our department is, and I think we're going to see good things to come. I just, it seems like it's endless on the capabilities and possibilities that it'll affect our apartment and our community.
Mr. Mayor?
Thank you.
Chief, I want to commend you for always being on the cutting edge to, for modern tools and things that will strengthen your ability to serve this community. And my hat's off to you because that, I've watched you over the time that I've been here and you're really always on the front edge and I appreciate that.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chief. Just that's a good explanation of why we're buying this.
Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign? Motion carries. This resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the city of Wake Cross, Georgia to declare certain real property owned by the city located on Francis Street and Grove Avenue as surplus property and for other purposes. By adopting and approving this resolution, the city commission will declare one parcel of real property on Francis Street and two parcels of real property on Grove Street owned by the city and which has no usable purpose for the city as surplus property and authorize the purchasing director to explore the use and services of licensed real estate broker. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We entertain a motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second the motion.
We have a motion by our Commissioner Solomon Gaines and seconded by our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. This resolution passes. Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the City of Wake Cross, Georgia to award a bid contract to Underwater Solutions, Inc. for cleaning in-ground portable water tanks and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will approve a bid contract with Underwater Solutions, Inc. of Massachusetts for the in-ground portable water tank cleaning and maintenance project in the amount not to exceed nine thousand, seven hundred and eighty dollars and to be paid from the water and sewer funds. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we entertain a motion?
Move for approval.
We have a motion.
Second the motion.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Davis, seconded from our Commissioner Hopkins. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Mr. Mayor? Let me catch unreadiness. This is where we are making sure that our tanks are clean and providing great service and clean water to our citizens. And I'm, my hat's off to you for doing this and making sure that we give a quality product to the citizens of Wake Cross, especially in our water department, and thank you so much for doing that.
All opposed, like sign. Motion carries. Resolution passes. At this time, Madam Clerk?
A resolution of the City of Wake Cross, Georgia to declare certain real property already surplus not to be sold to highest responsible bidder and for other purposes. By adopting this resolution, the City Commission will remove certain real property already surplus by Resolution Number 21-677 from the requirement of sale to the highest bidder and authorizing the purchase director to explore the use and services of a licensed real estate broker. Mr. Mayor?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Do we entertain a motion?
Move for approval, Mr. Mayor.
Second.
We have a motion from our Commissioner Solomon Gaines, a second from our Commissioner Davis. Any discussion on this resolution?
Mr. Mayor, maybe this is a prime piece of property, so for those out in Wake Cross looking, develop something, it's a good location, be grateful medical use, and when it comes up for sale, I hope everybody will get out and look at this property and bid on it. Thank you.
Thank you. Any further comments or questions? Hearing none, we'll move into voting. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, nay. Motion carries. This resolution passes. Madam Clerk, do we have any guests?
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor. We have Mr. Larry Capps. Could you please state your address or remember that you have five minutes to speak?
Larry Capps, 2007 Nola Street, good old Wake Cross. I had so much fun last night, I'm back again tonight. I have learned in the last 24 hours. I've got a PhD in how to handle business with the city. To start with, the people that should have contacted the city, either they failed to do so or it was given to the wrong people. That was the reason that it didn't get inspected. So I understand I might be wrong, but it's 60 days they have to contact you when they've done the work? Or 90 days, something that they have to do, contact the city? Anyway, it didn't happen. So that's the reason the water didn't get turned on, and now I understand that I have to have, I have to go through the whole thing again. The roof, the electricity and all, and so you know, I appreciate y'all listening to me last night, but it was a I have to take some responsibility for not staying behind a project that should have been taken care of four years ago. Commissioner Strickland advised me to get with the chief and set up something about some patrolling out there. And we will, we'll be starting over on getting everything going, to get the building re-inspected, whatever it takes. But anyway, I appreciate that you were in the commission's time. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Capps.
We appreciate you. Do we have any more guests?
No, sir, Mr. Mayor.
Do we have executive? When we move into the last call, we'll start with our most senior statement.
I haven't gotten my information yet.
Okay, very good.
I'm waiting for it to be texted to me.
Okay, certainly. Commissioner Solomon Gaines?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I want to announce that Commissioner John Threet. Let me go back. During our last month, when we had meetings last month, we had a lot of discussion about the youth in our community, the gang activity, all sorts of things that were going on with our children, and somebody needs to do something. Well, Commissioner Threet is, has set up a meeting entitled Changing Our Youth Narrative Through Dialogue. That will be at the City McRae City Auditorium on Monday, September 27th at 6:00 PM. It's gonna be a discussion concerning the issues affecting our youth. All community partners are invited, pastors, city and county, law enforcement, city and county officials, state and local officials, agencies, parents, and concerned citizens. If you want to have a dialogue with our children about their activities and things they're involved with, please come out. That's gonna be next Monday, September 27th at 6:00 PM at the City Auditorium. I also want to extend an invitation. On behalf of our President, Mrs. Webefor Phobey and the Ladies of Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, we are inviting all our young ladies who are in 12th grade, 11th grade, to become a part of our debutante and junior debutante program. We serve not only Word County, but also Pierce County and Coffee County. We are an equal opportunity sorority. That means this program is not just for African-American females, it's for all females who are in the 11th and 12th grades. I have posted a flyer on my Facebook page. Go to my Facebook page at Marion Solomon and share that flyer. It's also on the Wake Cross Illuminy Chapter Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Inc. Facebook page, so go there as well. To apply, you have to send an email to WAC1913 Delta, I'm sorry, let me spell it out. D E L T A D E B U T A N T E. But anyway, it's on the Facebook page, and we're inviting all young ladies. We're gonna go ahead and kick this off. Depending upon how things go with this virus, we are gonna start out with the virtual event, a virtual introduction, but depending upon how things go with this virus, well, depending upon how far we can go with these young ladies, but please spread the word and have your young people to apply. Also, Mr. Mayor, I would like to ask City Manager if we can put that Board of Ethics back on our next work session. Let's talk about what happened tonight with that. That's all I have, Mr. Mayor. Thank you very much.
Thank you. At this time, we hear from our Commissioner Hopkins.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations to our Two Employees of the Month. One's a firefighter and one is PD. So our Public Works is very important to the city, and we thank all the officers who put their life on the line every day for us, and thank you, Chief Cox, for your staff and all they do, and for the Chief, Eddings, because firefighters as well put their life on the line too. So thank y'all and congratulations to those two Employees of the Month. We thank all of our guests for coming. We did have some meetings. Mr. Peacock, I'd like to speak with you just for a minute after the meeting is over, please. Mr. Capps, we thank you for coming. I think that Mr. Hawkins will be glad to help you work through your problems to get your building up to code, so we want you to be part of the city, so thank you very much for coming and bringing that to our attention. It's just something that probably fell through the cracks, but we'll get it straight for you. Thank you very much. And I'd like to say happy birthday to my baby sister. When she gets older, I get older, so happy birthday, Sherry. And happy birthday, Chief Cox, you have an employee has a birthday today too, Donna Waters, so a happy birthday to you as well. And don't forget, we did announce earlier about Halloween. Will be observed on October 30th, which is on a Saturday night. We only have one more meeting, two more meetings before that, so we'll announce it again, but maybe we can go ahead and get that on the website because they'll start calling and wanting to know what day we're gonna celebrate, and since it's on Sunday, we will do it on Saturday night. And thank all of our guests for coming, and that's all I have, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Hawkins. Our Mayor Pro Tim, I'll save you for last, Commissioner Davis.
All right, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I was trying to wait for some information to come in about who has passed away since the last time we met, and I did not get it, but my heart goes out to all those that have passed away during this crisis since the last time we met. And if there's anything that I can do to those families, do for those families, please let me know. James, I sent you that Vernon Willis and Long Bewick. That area, it floods often, and I think it could be those those storm drains that's there. So I wish you would take a look into it because that water is beginning to go into that person's house that's on the corner of Long Bewick and Vernon Willis. So I appreciate you for doing the fine job that you're doing. Also, Mr. Mayor, I'm very humbled because of the citizens of my district did not put anyone up against me. I'm running, I won't have to run this time because there's no one that's come in and qualified against me, and I want to thank them for having that confidence in me. And I do know that there are many people that are qualified and are qualifying to run for these positions here. And I want to, Mr. Mayor, if I get an opportunity to say to them that you listen to your community, and whatever your community says, you bring it to this up here, and you put it on the public agenda and you keep it here until you get a solution for their problem. Don't come here bringing your own personal animosities. And you need to be, to serve your community. It's not a bully pulpit to put people down or spread lies about some gossip that you may hear in the community. Or to vindicate your own personal animosities against individuals. Or to bogart the staff because you didn't get a service that you wanted when you were a citizen or just a civilian, and then you come here and get an opportunity to to just take that, to both these citizens, these staff members here, because they're citizens too. And they work hard. They work hard for you. And we don't pay them as much as we should pay them because I still believe that we need to do serve with fifteen dollars an hour, and we need to continue to move towards that to pay this staff because of the service that they do here. I want my hat's off to the chief. A chief, and if anyone comes to up here to ask that we defund the Police Department, I wish you would let me know if anyone would come to you, because I don't know of anyone who's come here to ask for the Police Department to be defunded, because I don't believe in that. And the people that's in my district, they don't believe in that either. So my hat's off to you doing a fine job, and I will continue to support you. But like I said, this is not a place to come tell lies on people because you don't like them. This is not the place to come deal with your personal vendettas and try to excel yourself on lies. This is a place to come and serve the community, to serve the public. And whatever your citizens in your district say, you bring it to this public and put it on the public agenda here, and you hold it here until you get answers one way or the other. And I commend you, young man, for coming, even though this, as you say, is a done deal, but you still come, you still came. And I want to encourage citizens, not only in my district, but in other districts, to come before this body, because this is where the solutions are. This is why I'm here. I'm here to serve the community. And if I have to step on some toes to do that, especially when I find someone that's lying to the community, I'm gonna call it out. And the people in my district knows that. And the people on this staff knows that. So my hat's off to the mayor for being diligent and being precise in what you do. And my hat's off to the City Manager and to the City Attorney. And most of all, the lady that makes, keeps up with our money. China. She's brilliant. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Commissioner Davis. Our Mayor Pro Tim, Commissioner Henry Strickland.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Start off tonight by thanking Mr. Capps again for coming out tonight and not just sitting back and wanting a solution, but actually coming and perhaps discovering a solution. Mr. Peacock, appreciate you coming out tonight, opening dialogue. I think we all, we all learned a little bit more tonight. We definitely learn more every time we walk in this room, and we we learn too, as the mayor explained so perfectly well, that how this thing kind of works. Like on your Monday night, you come in your Monday night, and that's when everything gets hashed and beat down and drug through the mud and round and round and round. It was literally 9:30 when we walked out here last night. That's no big deal. That's what we all signed on for. We all knew that coming in. I mean, our phones ring constantly, day and night, texts, day and night. That's what we do. That's what we signed on for, and that's okay. We may not always agree in this room, and that's fine too. But here is where we learn and we grow, and I appreciate you coming. Your wife will be in my prayers, and I'm glad to hear that she is doing better. So thank you for bringing that. Thank you all for coming tonight to share and to learn. Thank you to our staff who tirelessly works hard to make this city a better place. If nobody else appreciates you, I do. So thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you.
Fellow citizens and to each of you who are in this galley tonight, thank you so much for being present. I want to commend Mr. Capps for coming back and for Mr. Hargrove and Mr. Peacock as they came in to have dialogue and discussion. We opened the door for that. Matter of fact, I've seen Mr. Peacock come upstairs. He'll come up and talk to us in the office. So these are the times that we open the door for people to come in and have conversation. Do want to acknowledge a great person tonight. I want to congratulate our City Manager on just getting married. And congratulations to you, and I would say to your new family, they're doing really well. They're doing really well. They have such a jewel, and we appreciate you. We are thanking you for working very diligently with the staff and keeping things going smoothly, even though I know you've had a lot on your plate, and you've done phenomenally well, and we want to commend you and thank you. For another note, I want to, I did not do something way back, and I want to thank you again, Commissioners. They have to be here, and especially last night, I had to step out, but I noticed something. Everybody got here, we were on time, we started at five on the head, and not only did we start, we had to take a break at one point, then they came back and kicked off again and put as much energy in the second half as they did in the first half. And that is tremendous. You have to have a heart for the citizens to do what I've seen done in this room. And I commend each of our Commissioners for the hard work they've put in. Do want to go back to what our Commissioner Solomon Gaines mentioned regarding our Commissioner John Threet's changing our youth narrative through dialogue. I certainly agree that we need to have conversation, because if we listen, we can learn. And if we learn from our citizens what needs to be done, then we can lead from that perspective. And truly, this is a great group of people. Do want to go back to what our Commissioner Solomon Gaines mentioned regarding our Commissioner John Three's, changing our youth narrative through dialogue. I certainly agree that we need to have conversation, because if we listen, we can learn, and if we learn from our citizens what needs to be done, then we can lead from that perspective. And truly, this is a great group of people. We can work together. Want to commend one other person. He came into our meeting not too long ago, and he spoke before us, and he is a citizen of Wake Cross, but he's just most recently got assigned to the GMA as one of their attorneys, and I'm really proud of him, and that is our Demetrius Causer. So this is awesome. He came in here, and they just recently gave him a job, and I'm saying that is phenomenal. So he is working with Georgia Municipal Association. That's a big thing. We're excited about our time coming together, because October third through October the ninth, we have Cities Week, and we're going to enjoy that week, and I thank you for such a great planned program throughout the entire time. To each of you, this has been a great night, and we got to put on, as she was reminding me, we got to wear our masks, so let me do that too.
No, I'm just reminding.
She was reminding us all to put on our masks, but.
No, 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 Mr. Mayor, just about the mandate that we have at the city.
We have a mandate in the city, and that's, that mandate is that we wear our masks in this building. If you don't, if you come in the building, just put on your mask, and that's what she wanted to remind me of. I appreciate each of you. I look forward to seeing you in the city, and this has been a moment with the commission and the mayor. At this time, I entertain.
Move for approval.
Thank you. He so moved approval of an adjournment, and it's the second. All in favor, aye?
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. You can stay if you like. This meeting is now adjourned.